Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is LP Mainville. I'm the Athlete Development Director for the OVA. So it's a pleasure for me to welcome you to this information session, this Town Hall, specifically made for parents and athletes. In this session, we will cover some information that was covered in previous sessions with some of our club people. But in this one, we really want to address the questions that you, parents and athletes, may have in regards to returning to volleyball this fall. So again, if you've been in some of our previous Town Halls, you will see a lot of the same information that was shared. But again, we wanted to connect specifically with parents and athletes tonight. And so to assist me in this presentation, actually, I'm not going to do much. I'm the facilitator tonight. I will speak to you a little bit at the end. And I will also mention some questions. But really, the people that will be providing the information tonight are Alicia Lytham. Alicia, you want to say hello and say who you are?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Alicia Lytham, Director of Operations for the Ontario Volleyball Association.
Awesome. Thank you, Alicia. We also have Kerry Campbell. Hi, Kerry. Kerry says hello. She's our manager of indoor competitions. And we have Joanne, Joanne Lubicich. Hi, Joanne.
Hi, LP. Hi, everyone. Joanne Lubicich, Executive Director. Thanks for joining us.
Awesome. No, thank you for joining us. And so I will put up a PowerPoint that will kind of guide us through the presentation. And we will get started. For the questions, just for your information, you can put them in the chat box. So myself and Alicia will be monitoring the chat box for some of your questions. And if there are some questions that are very relevant to what's being talked about right now, I may interrupt whoever's presenting to ask a question. If not, we'll come back at the end and cover all of the questions that were asked. So let me just get the presentation started. I'm going to share my screen right away. I haven't done this enough in the past in the past six months. I'm like, yeah, okay. Are we good here?
Yes.
Awesome. And so, I will see. We will cover tonight for you the indoor volleyball return to play protocol for Stage Three. I believe that most regions in Ontario are in Stage Three now, if not all. We will also talk about club compliance. We will tell you a little bit about the trial policy modifications and how that may affect your experience as a player this fall. We'll talk about the new membership registration process for the athletes and some updates on that as well. And then we'll finish with a short conversation on, you know, why you should sign up for club volleyball this fall with all of that's going on and all the uncertainty that is out there. And we will have our Q and A at the end. Okay? So I will pass it on to Joanne to take the section on return to play.
Thanks, LP. And as I said, thanks so much for joining us. I mean, obviously, this has been unprecedented times with, I mean, return to play protocol. That is something that we've been hearing, return to work, return to school, return to play. So we just wanted to talk a bit about volleyball and really wanted to tell you how the OVA came and put together their return to play protocol, how it does really comes together from the government regulations of what's allowed at this time. We work with public health authorities. We have to refer to our insurance, our legal. We also have to follow our NSO, Volleyball Canada. And then we also have facilities and permit issuers. Can we get facilities? What are the rules of the facilities? So the return to play protocol, there's one for outdoor and there's also one for indoor. And there are tools to take to those facilities for our clubs so that our sport can come back into action following government regulations. So LP is going to advance me to the next one. So I just wanted to take you through some of the components of what we just talked about there. Local public health authorities, they really, they hold the, I'm going to, I don't want to use this now, but the trump card, but they do. Whatever has to happen in that area, whatever their rules are, local public health, they really rule the roost on that. So be familiar and comply with all of your local public health requirements. We have shared our return to play protocols with local public health, our clubs have. And they really came back and they really supported a lot around educational resources, fact sheets. And they're really good at just helping us keep in tune of what's required in the area. So just stay in touch with your local public health, know the rules. And that's what the local clubs are held to and the facilities in the area are held to. Volleyball Canada. So they put together, they have quite a challenge because their return to play has to do with the entire country, which is at, I mean, different stages, as we know, across from province to province is very different. So Ontario, we are completely in line with Volleyball Canada's return to play protocols. They do put out a progression of how you move through returning to play, just starting as our first version of return to play was just around skill work and then now moving into some small group gameplay and some skill work. And then now we even have some beach friendlies in small groups doing a bit of, not really a competition, but they are doing games. So there's a progression as you move through, but there's some basics that we all look to and that's minimizing the group size. Making sure there's things that you can do where is there volleyballs designated for a group? Frequently cleaning the volleyballs, also with the athletes cleaning their hands, eliminating any unnecessary contact. I mean, in Ontario, that's required. So but across the country, that's another one of the things that they look to, always having good hygiene. And there really is varying plans throughout the province. So I just wanted to point that out is there's different provinces that we look to and see how their models are working. And some of that actually comes from like Quebec, as we know, is playing and competing. But Alberta looks to more of a cohort model. So we like to look at and see how they're tracking and how they're doing because they do play within a cohort similar to Ontario's model. So that's something that is going well there. And so we do have, we do expect the same here in Ontario.
Joanne, just a question and I had here was, do these protocols apply to like to all clubs in Ontario? Have we have to do all of these all of these measures?
Yes. That is correct. I can't expand it. I'm thinking of a way to expand that answer.
I wonder, I wonder if the question was relating to maybe some clubs having different protocols or they should all be the same or?
Okay, so yeah, so clubs may have further protocols. So we do have where the OVA has their return to play protocol. Now, you always have to layer in what the facility requires. So the facility has their traffic flow, their exit and entry, masks being worn inside. So you do always have to layer in any other requirements the facility has. Along with the club could also add further requirements as well. So it's not fair to say that they're all exactly the same, but ours is like a limit.
And just another one before we move on. One question that just popped up in the chat is that when you're talking about a cohort model, does that mean regional? Or that means division level? What do you mean by cohort model?
Oh, well, how Alberta works is they have, you enter into a group and you just play in that one group. So that's similar to what we're asking. One of the reasons when we get down to the end of why play club volleyball, it's one of those around getting together with a team and training with the same group of athletes. So you're creating, our teams create a cohort where you're not mixing, you're not going and attending this camp or attending that camp and going to this skills clinic. You're keeping your son or daughter in one group and training with that same group. So that's something that is really what, you know, the medical professions, they're looking to. It's like getting everything into what, not everyone, everybody, get them into one group that they train with and you don't want to intermingle the groups. You want to limit that. And that comes back into our government regulations and some of the next slides where they're limiting that group to 50, for example, for team sports. So that's maybe not like the most exact way to explain a cohort, but that's kind of the concept behind it. It's just, it's limiting the intermingling. So just to cover off the insurance piece, there's government regulations that need to be followed, which is why the return to play protocol gets put together. And so from there, it's kind of important to follow it. You don't follow the protocol, it's illegal activity and there wouldn't be any insurance. That was the easiest way the insurance broker covered it, covered it off to us. So this is where we've taken, we've covered off the return to play protocol, we've talked to the clubs, what is, how we're trying to mitigate our risks. I mean, COVID is excluded from insurance. So there's, it's really important to mitigate all your risks and be as safe as we can and follow the protocols and the procedures that are required. You can look on by. So I just wanted to take you through some of the government regulations all the way through to team sports. Now, I know we all know what physical distancing means. We've been hearing this now for the last, I don't even want to think about how many months this is. But there's something important. So physical distancing is still required. So obviously volleyball is allowed to be played, but physical distancing is still required off the court and social circles do not apply to any organized training activity. So you can't walk into a facility and say, oh, we're all in the same social circle. So we don't need to wear masks or we don't need to adhere to your rules. It doesn't work that way. The facility is required to have all, anyone that's in the facility, participants, spectators, maintain physical distancing. And then depending on the activity they're doing, follow the return to play protocol for that sport. So I just really wanted to make that point around physical distancing is very important. And social circles are not a way to just kind of bypass that rule. This is gathering size now at this time is the 50 persons for indoor that can be involved in the activity. You can also have 50 spectators. This is indoor, but I just wanted to point out that that is so facility dependent. We all know that sometimes we're in pretty small facilities and there's going to be times where if we want the activity or the teams to be able to play a game, we won't have room for spectators. If spectators are in a facility, they have to be able to maintain physical distancing. We even have to be able to maintain physical distancing for any of the athletes, the coaching staff that are involved in the activity. So we have to really look at what space, what the space, how much space there is for the facility. So that's going to be a really tough one, obviously, indoors and for some of the facilities where we try to get some volleyball action happening.
Joanne, just to clarify though, in terms of maintaining physical distancing, it's for everyone that's off of the court. So on court, the athletes are allowed to breach physical distancing. Correct?
We're getting to that slide.
But before we get to that slide, Joanne, I also just wanted to mention, because we had a conversation last night with some club contacts and some of our regional presidents. And the one thing that the four panelists that we had all said is that in their clubs, they were not allowing parents into the gym for practices. Even if they were going to run any sort of tryouts, they were not going to let any parents in for safety reasons and to make sure that they do not exceed the limits that are imposed on them by the facilities and by the protocols. And so I just wanted to mention that. And I know we obviously have a lot of parents on this call. And, you know, we like to go in and watch our kids play and we want to see them perform and all that stuff. But I think, you know, above all, we want to know that they're out there and they're having fun and they're moving and they're playing the sport that they like. And unfortunately for us, right, parents, well, this year, very likely that we're going to have to do it without actually seeing our kids play. And it's kind of, yeah, an unfortunate thing about this, but I think we should all be pretty happy that we're able to create a conditions for the athletes to be back in sport, right?
So yes, now we just have, so that's a very real situation. Now let's move on to some safe sport issues that we need to make sure with that. So yes, as parents, it's like there's not going to be room for us in the gym. It's also very healthy for for the athletes to have the opportunity to interact with their team without parents always being around watching. Practice is their time to learn, to grow, to interact with their teammates. But the question that you want to make sure that you're, as a parent, you're asking to the club is, how are you adhering to the rule of two? So how is that? So if the coach is on their own and, for example, the assistant coach is usually there but can't make it, there should be a parent supervisor. There should be, there should be someone assigned to that team so that coach isn't alone with the athletes. So that's something that absolutely, like, we all have to kind of, we have to work together to get through, you know, these, there's so many rules and limitations, but we also have to make sure that we don't put aside the safety of the athletes and the coach on the other side that the rule of two is still adhered to. So that's still an important question. And so everyone just needs to kind of work through those situations.
Actually, Joanne, some of the clubs mentioned that last night also on the call. And some of them suggested an idea, which was that, yeah, if they had a situation where they only had one coach available, that they would maybe ask a parent to join the session and to sit, you know, and just be there as a second adult. Now they were wondering how to select that parent and if they had a rotation throughout. So I guess that for you, parents, it's a good conversation to have with, you know, your athletes, you know, your child's coach or club representative. But definitely something that you're going to want to work out with them.
Yeah, and just keep in mind that those parents need to be screened technically. So yeah, it's great to have that rotating chaperone role. And then the parents get to change up and see. And then they also can kind of see some of the dynamics of the team and see what, how the players are doing. So for sure. And the team managers, a lot of times, can work through those schedules. But yeah, and that may be something that maybe one or two parents are, there is room for them. So the parents could rotate or that's something to discuss with your, with your club. So yeah, so let's move on with government regulations. Stage Three allows for some team play for team sports where physical contact can be avoided. So physical distancing is still required, as we just talked through. We have to adhere to the gathering sizes. And then you layer in, there's an exception for team sports that they can be played if no, if physical contact can be avoided. Or if the play can be modified to avoid physical contact. So the rule reads, team sports may only be practiced or played within the facility if they do not allow for physical contact between players. So for volleyball, that's a really good thing because we can avoid physical contact. So it's nice that we can get some gameplay going. And even for the, even for the training environment, that means that the athletes can have some gameplay. Now, there is obviously then any other time when the athletes are not playing or practicing volleyball, they have to, we have to go back and make sure like that first rule, physical distancing must be required. And then we really must look to limiting this time when they're breaching physical distancing. And that's part of the return to play protocol. So I, I'm not sure if that's in the next slide or not, LP, but that's part of just, or it's probably your programming part. So that's part of limiting that time that the athletes do breach physical distancing. So just to continue with leagues and a little bit of what we were talking about before, it is up to a limit of, the government has allowed some league play to happen, but it's only up to a group of 50 participants. So it's not very many people that are participants that are mingling and competing against each other. But they can have up to 50 people in a league and play. So clubs can run some house leagues and some play or within their own club or their area. But it should, it cannot have more than 50 participants. And that league can't then play another league. If, 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 if there is, I'm trying to think of an example. Well, if there is a league that's happening and then they want to play some other teams, they would have to take, they would have to take at least a two week break and that to be responsible. And then to create a different group that would then play in the league. So that's something about if you're, if you're having interplay within some teams. So again,
How does the concept of league applies, apply to OVA when we have like more of a tournament style calendar?
It doesn't. So I'm sorry, like we split up the, because it's not a league. So when you go back to the previous rule, like we can have gameplay and competitions, but avoid physical contact. So then we're just, we're back to limiting to the 50 participants. So we could, we can have, here's an example. And I mean, this is something that Kerry and her team has been, have been working on. Some modified competition format where we could have four teams that could come together and play each other in a gym. Obviously, that means no spectators because there really wouldn't be any room inside a lot of our gyms. But the teams could come together and play each other and leave and go home, which would be nice for the athletes to have that opportunity to play. But yeah, you do have a limit of the number of participants.
And is it, not just me like going with what you said there, is that safe to assume that if you did have a meetup of some teams like that under the 50 participants, if they let two weeks go, then they would be able to then join another group of teams at a different event that would be similar meetup between four teams?
Yeah. And this is where the government, there's not like a specific, if you're just having exhibition matches, there's nothing formal that says you have to do the two week wait. But that would be something that would be very like reasonable and responsible of what we know at this time. So league play, yes, you're supposed to, league play, you're required, that's the government regulation, you play within your 50. So you know that every week you're coming together, you're playing within that league. But if you're having some exhibition games with some teams, there, there's no, like, there, there isn't a written rule that you must wait two weeks to them before you play another team. But I would look to, as parents, I would look to say, does this make sense as far as what we're doing? How many exposures for our children? Like, there's something to be said on what's a reasonable schedule. So when the OVA looks at it, there will be spacing between the age groups so that they'll be, will be able to space them out. And then, I mean, for the club teams, you're training within your team for the majority of the time. So that's great. You're with those same, you know, 10 to 12, 15 athletes. So that's a, that's a really good way to kind of limit and mitigate some risks around exposures. So just, your clubs really have to go through the wringer. There's a lot that our clubs have to do to come back into return to play protocols. So I just really wanted to share some of them with you just from, to let you know how like the clubs are working really hard to come back into action. I mean, we've been having Town Halls all summer long sharing this information. There's frequently asked questions, there's answers on the website, there's the other Town Halls, the video, the recordings are there. Feel free to listen to them. But I just really wanted to share about how engaged the clubs have been to be able to get to the point where they are now where, you know, athletes are getting offers, they're arranging tryouts, reviewing applications of teams. And in order to operate, they've gone through all these stages. There's a risk mitigation assessment checklist that they've had to go through. In order to get permits or find facilities, they've had to, you know, become very familiar with the return to play protocol, share with the facility. The facility has to be comfortable that they're able to run and operate in their facility or else the facility owners are liable. They've, you know, acknowledged back with the OVA that they're going to operate under these parameters. They've, there's an education plan that they not only have to put together, they have to share with their coaches, with any athletes that are participating, with you, the parents, everything around how they're going to, how they are going to operate, a response plan if something does happen. There's also, as you can imagine, another waiver for COVID. Health screening must happen every single time when the athletes come in for any session and participant tracking. So we have contact tracing and everyone's had to look to modify their programming. So it's a lot of work and it's been great to see our community really come together and really put together a lot of programming for our athletes and really try to do what they can. And a lot where we'll still even look to hybrid solutions of virtual programming as LP will be helping our clubs and a lot of clubs are already doing that as well. So gym time is going to be tough, but I think we'll be able to create some really exciting programs for athletes that will still keep them connected to volleyball. LP, you want to do the programming one?
Absolutely. So in terms of the programming, like Joanne said, it's one of the ways that clubs can use to mitigate risk. And we have some guidelines in our OVA return to play protocol. And those are that essentially, and so the first point you see there, that there's no deliberate physical contact. That actually comes from the government of Ontario. So like Joanne has mentioned, we are allowed to go back to play and players who are on the court don't necessarily have to wear a mask, although we've heard of some clubs who do require the athletes to wear a mask if they're doing light activity on court. And so again, up to, up to the club to decide what they are comfortable with. But yeah, so we're allowed to play and come closer to each other, but there can't be any deliberate physical contact. So no high fives, none of those things. It's very unfortunate for some of our, you know, young athletes who obviously like to come together, get into some huddles and all that stuff, none of that when we return to play. But we can have fairly normal volleyball in Stage Three of, in Ontario. And some of the guidelines that we have is that, and that clubs will be implementing, is that we are asking them to keep up to six active, that would be six active participant per side, seven, including the libero if you were in a game context. But that applies to both competition and practices. And so that was put there to avoid, avoid a situation where all 12 athletes who are participating in the practice are on the same side of the net. For example, and I'm sure you've seen this before, you know, all athletes on one side of the net warming up, for example, and doing their hitting warm up or something. And everybody's really close to each other because 12 people are within that nine by nine meter court. And so there needs to be more spacing between athletes. And so what that rule says is essentially a six active participant per side. So we can have six on one side, six on the other side. But as soon as you're designing a drill for practice, players who are not, who are, let's say, let's say there's 10 athletes on one side of the court. There can only be six on the court. The other ones have to be socially, you know, physically distanced outside of the court. And I guess not active on the court. Along with this, we can have 14 athletes active in a game or in a scrimmage. So that would be your six players per court plus a libero that can come in and out. So that's, that's for more of a scrimmage and game situation. Um, so that's, uh, that's for more of a scrimmage and game, uh, situation. Uh, we're asking that scrimmages and gameplay are limited. And so we're asking that the sessions are limited to a hundred and twenty minutes or two hours. Now, what we've done at the OVA with the friendlies, the beach friendlies that we've been running. Is that we actually limit each game to thirty-five minutes. So that is recommended for clubs to again, limit the duration of, uh, of their exhibition matches if they, if they do. Um, now it's rare that we see matches that go for, for two hours, uh, for a single match. Um, so bring that up into smaller chunks, uh, is, uh, is, is a good idea. Um. And then we're also asking with that, so the other thing is by doing smaller. Uh, chunks, I guess of play is that allows, uh, teams and participants to actually sanitize their hands and maybe clean up some equipment. Uh, every thirty minutes or so, uh, throughout the session. So, um, obviously everything gets cleaned up after before sessions, but we're also asking in our protocol that, um. Uh, players and coaches sanitize their hands, um, every, uh, thirty minutes or so. And I can't remember if you mentioned this, Joanne, but, um, everybody who is in the gym, but that's not an active player. Must be wearing a mask as per most of the, um, health units recommendations across the province. And so that would mean that as a coach, um, your child's coach will likely be coaching with a mask from off of the, off of the court. Again, we've heard from clubs who have, um, you know, different protocols regarding that. We're asking coaches to stay very, very far away to coach from the outside. Um, but at the very minimum, they need to stay two meters away from a, from the players. Uh, so we've talked about the no physical contact and the two meters interaction. Um, again, John mentioned this earlier, but off court, everybody off court must respect physical distancing. Uh, and I mentioned it for the players who would not be involved in a drill, for example. If you are in a facility where there are multiple courts, it's recommended that the courts are spaced out. So I'm sure you've all seen some facilities where the courts are literally beside each other. If that was the case, and you had a three court facility, for example, while the best practice would be to not use the middle court. Uh, to use the two end courts, that there's space in the middle to, uh, split the two groups that are, um, that are participating in the, in the activity. Uh, another, uh, thing that we recommend in the, uh, in our return to play protocol is also to use visual cues, just cones. Uh, maybe tape on the floor to indicate the space where the athletes must, um, kind of stand, I guess. Off of the court to make sure that they stay away from each other. So those are all things that when you send your child back to a practice. Uh, with your club, that you can kind of look for, um, you know, you question the, 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 the clubs and the coaches. If you see that some of these things are not being implemented. Um, and again. I really recommend that you have a conversation with, uh, your child's coach and their club. In order for, for them to also explain how they're implementing this and how important it is, uh, for them. Uh, if you have any concerns with what is going on, uh, you should definitely enter in a conversation with them to make sure that. Uh, you all have the same understanding about, um, what safety and health measures are, are being, uh, are being used. Okay, I think that's, uh, is that back to you there, Joanne?
Sure, um, this is obviously something on top of everyone's mind, um, is, um. Where do we get gyms? Right now with, um, schools not issuing, um, any community use permits, it's a bit of a, a challenge, obviously. Um, for everybody, for the clubs, for the OVA, um. And the ministry is fully aware, and I think Carrie may even had another update today because there's some rumblings that are happening in behind. So our sport ministry has been, um, really pushing the ministry of education around once school is, um. Back and transitioned, um, let's figure out some, let's make sure some, there's some safe ways to get some volleyball and basketball back into the schools. So the, so the kids have something to play. Um, which is something that is obviously a big concern for all of us is that if the kids aren't able to play sports at school. And I don't even know if they'll have gym class, like what, uh, what activity are our kids going to be able to get? Um, so that's something, and I have another meeting this week actually with the government about that, where the Ontario Basketball Association. Executive Director, we've joined forces to kind of bring all of the issues and the points and even try to give them some recommendations on. Um, you know, how our teams can enter and exit the schools without, you know, creating a lot more cleaning and the, we bring our own equipment and all those good things. So, um, we're working on that issue. Um, we have heard that, um, it's possible that some school boards, um, will, will look to issuing some school permits. Um, November, I, we don't know, we, to, to be honest, we really don't know, but that's what we're, we're looking for. We understand that schools have to get back, um, and most importantly, get the kids back in the classroom. Um, so the other thing is there's also, um. Uh, there was a recent clarification around capacity limits on a per room basis by the, from the government. So that has helped facilities, so that also helps, um, our clubs in being able to. Like facilities like Rim Park, they're very clear on, they can have fifty in a double and they've been able to split the, the courts into, you know, two different spaces and have fifty in each. Uh, they'll be able to have, and then still have fifty in, in each of their arenas. So there's these, these things that are getting, um, cleared up, but these things take time. As we know, this is our first time that, uh, we've had to gone through this type of, um, crisis, so there's lots to work through. Um, and it really does take everyone working together and, you know, really being innovative and creative and patient. Um, to go through, um, getting, um, back to action. Um, and the other government regulation around leagues, um, as fifty participants and the rules around the league. Um, are pretty unclear, um, so we are waiting for more clarification around that. And there is supposed to be come, some more information coming very soon. Um, so that's kind of just an overall update of, um, how difficult things are and. Behind the scenes, there's a lot of moving parts that, uh, people are trying to work through.
Joanne, there's, uh, been a few questions on this slide. There's one I'd like to ask, uh, you now, and I'll come back to the other ones later. Um, the question as, um, is regarding basically what, is there anything that parents can do to help lobby for school permits? Anything that you're aware, like, that they can do to, uh, exert pressure, I guess, on, uh, school boards to issue permits? Cause obviously it is a big challenge for a lot of the clubs.
Oh, it's a great question. Um, I think, um, I think it's really, I think it's really important that we share this concern with our MPPs. Um, I mean, the health and wellbeing and our kids being able to be active, um, is critical. So, I mean, in a safe environment, so I think that, um. Absolutely, I'm reaching out to you, right, to, to your MPPs. I don't know, I don't know the government system well enough to know if, if there's any, how you do that, if there's anything within the school board. But I know our route is for sport, we go through our sport consultant in the ministry and we have a meeting with the Assistant Deputy Minister this week. Um, so I'm going to find out more hopefully about. How we can kind of, um, um, approach this. But definitely, um, making the MPPs aware is, it can't hurt. That, that would be my, that would be my piece. And also, um, if you do know of any other facilities for your clubs. Um, please share with them because I know some are, like, they're knocking on any doors they can. There's private facilities, there's Montessori schools, there might be a court at a church. Um, they're trying to find wherever they can, because until there's some school, um. You know, if permits do get eased up and are starting to be issued, at least if, if teams can get in once a week. Um, and in alternate facilities, um, that's huge. That's great for that, that's great for the, the team to be able to get an opportunity to, to come together and, and practice, even if it's once a week.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Joanne. That was a lot of talking for you. Um, Carrie. How's it going? You've been silent this whole time. You're up.
I've been on mute. Okay. Um, so again, just to say what LP and Joanna said, welcome everybody, thanks for joining us today. Um, and just to follow on the heels of the permit problem, um, this is a large reason why we have created the modifications for the tryout window this year. Um. So it's kind of to act as a contingency plan, um, and to work with in conjunction with possibly a traditional tryout. Um, we know that some areas in the province are a little, um, more desperate for facilities than others, so we need to make sure that they have a chance to fill their rosters. Um, so this is a, a lot of the, the push towards changing the tryout window for this year. And obviously we want to make sure that we are getting, um, kids into cohorts, um, like Joanne has suggested. And we want to limit the risk, uh, we don't want kids jumping from gym to gym and, um, exposing themselves to, uh, a number of different, uh. Training environments, um, especially during this time. Um, so we'll just kind of go through a, a few of the major changes, um, in the policy and, um. Why they were brought about and, and possibly what to look forward to now that we're, we're really into the process, into the, the, the policy right now with. In regards to timing and, and September, right around the corner. Um, so key points, um, this current modifications do keep in line with the dates of the original posted window back in the spring. Um, this will be, we have included an athlete driven process, which is the application process. And, um, we want to push the, um, opportunities for virtual open houses and virtual training opportunities. Again, just to limit those, um, contact points, mitigate risks, some things along that line. Okay, so, um, we are in September, so we have clearly pushed through two of these, uh, opportunities for, um, making teams. Um, obviously the first one was expanding our resigning period, um, to the end of the summer. And also opening up to all other age divisions. Originally it was only open to fourteen to eighteen new athletes, but we did open that up to eleven to, um. Thirteen new athletes, um, for all the reasons that we have mentioned earlier. Um, we just passed the phase one offer form, uh, offer period for, um, athletes that were training with new clubs. Um, over the summer. So, um, just to reiterate, as of the end of nationals, so typically around May thirty-first. Every athlete technically becomes a free agent. That means they are allowed to pursue other training opportunities with clubs that they didn't train with over the indoor season. Um, and they can, you know, reach out to clubs, look for opportunities, talk to coaches and try to find the best fit for them. So that can happen during the summer months. So, and this phase one, uh, uh, phase one period was meant to address that. We know that there were athletes out there that were, um, training and really already committed to a club. Um. Uh, pri, uh, already with their, their multiple training opportunities. So we wanted to, to allow them to sign to their club, get secured and allow our clubs to move on to planning. So, um, not only does this have a safety issue with our kids and permits, it also has a huge planning component for our clubs. Um, the quicker our clubs can find out how many teams they're running, um, what their numbers are going to look like. The easier they can translate that into permits, training spaces. Um, so they can get a better idea of what their season is going to look like and help them really get a better. Um, uh, goal in mind when they're searching for facilities, if they need to search for new ones. Um, so it, it has a huge planning component on the, the club administration size, side. Um. So yeah, so that's all wrapped up right now, um, and now we're headed into the open house time. So this is where you as parents have an opportunity to, um, research clubs, um, see who's. Um, looking for, for athletes on certain age divisions, um, contact people, ask questions, all that kind of fun stuff. Um, so and in return, we're, we're hoping that our clubs are able to offer some type of virtual or maybe even outdoor. Type, uh, gathering where you're able to, to find all the answers to the questions that you have if, if you do need to find a new club. Um, so that's happening right now and it will be ongoing, like these, these type of. Meetings or gatherings, um, can happen anytime really, where there's really great information gathering sessions, um. Preseason, obviously we don't want them to happen mid-season, but, um, as long as they're happening preseason before athletes are all committed to a team. So, and also during this time, all those resigned athletes, all those athletes were able to commit to the club that they were training with over the season. Are going to be forwarded to the OVA and we are going to post them on our website. Again, this is, um, a planning tool, um, for you as parents and athletes to see who's out there, who's signed. And if you know that, um, some athletes. Are in the position that your son or daughter, um, is looking for, then it might not be worth going to that tryout. Um. So it's kind of planning for everybody. And we will also have a chance for clubs to declare what they're looking for. So this will be again, um, a list posted to the OVA website where you can check to see the clubs in your area and see the teams. That still have open spots on their roster. We're hoping to have the age division and the physician listed to what they're looking for. So it'll be a great resource for you guys to look at before the trial period and before applications go out as well. So those will be posted, um. Uh, as the dates are listed here on, um, the slide, so. And that'll be right, great going into the, um, the application period. So, um, the player application period, this is brand new for us. Um, and, uh, it's a very, it's all, like I said, it's a tool that we want clubs to use if they're not able to use gyms. Or even if they feel like it's a better option for the club for whatever reason. Um, I'm just going to take a, a few minutes to go over some aspects of the, um, application process because it is new. And, um, just to help everybody understand, and I'm sure LP will be able to, um, go through the questions after, so. So, um, again, the player application period will fall in line with the trial process, happen around the same weekends. And it is any player that's interested in being selected to their club, to a new club. And we're going to ask them to do this application through a form. These forms will be posted, there'll be one form for all age divisions, it will be posted on the website on September eighth. Um. Although the, the applications are not due till later in September, we want to give the athletes a chance to review the application, gather information. And kind of really, um, look for the club that would best suit them before that's, um, it's actually due to the club. So, um. The form will obviously ask, um, your contact information, all that, you know, important stuff. Height, the position the athlete's applying for. And there are no, um, set answers here, you know, obviously for younger kids, we realize we don't want specially specialization and, and, and all that good stuff. Um. So it's not mandatory set, um, answers, obviously you can elaborate a little bit if you feel it's necessary. Um, we're going to ask for a little bit of club history if there is any, um. And then the number of years you've been playing couple, couple, club volleyball. Any, um, links to any type of game video that you may have, game tape, um. Things like that, any additional club volleyball accomplishments, um, school playing experience, house league experience. Um, there's also another spot for other information. This will be, um, any type of detail you want to give on a, a playing background where there's soccer, basketball, uh, hockey, anything like that. Um, so that will be all, that form will be available on the OVA website for download as a fillable PDF. And then, um, make sure you check the club website to see how they're collecting those forms and who those forms should be sent to if they are running the application process. Um, so we are limiting athletes to two clubs per go for the application process. Um, this was mainly due for, um. They, it's very easy to submit an application. We want these applications to be taken very seriously and for the, the athlete to really evaluate what club fits them best. And, and not just throw out ten applications there and hope one of them stick. Um, clubs will be using this as a, as a planning tool and helping them get their season going. And, um, sometimes they feel like they can count on an athlete and, and, and all that. But if it, it's kind of misleading a bit if an athlete is applying to clubs that they're just. A shot in the dark type, uh, type of thing. So we really want to take this, them athletes to take this, uh, process seriously and really do their work, homework and, and find out what real clubs are really interested in. and really do their homework and find out what real clubs are really interested in. So, yeah. Talking me too fast. I apologize if I'm going too fast. So once you do submit your application to your two clubs or even the one club, if you like best, that you like best, clubs have a maximum of 72 hours to respond to that application. So they can respond with an offer, they can request additional information, even request an interview time, or they can say thank you, please, maybe next year. But if you do not hear a response within those 72 hours, it will be considered a deferral. So that, so you can head on over to the next club or, you know, or it'd be great and you found your, your home already. And clubs must offer, honor their offers for a minimum of 24 hours. So if you apply to your clubs and you get two acceptances right away, you have 24 hours to accept that offer. There is a short window on that acceptance because we feel that if you applied for these clubs, you should have already have a vested interest in these clubs and should really know which one you want right away. And again, it helps us keep this process going, helps club move on to the next athlete if they get deferred and helps the athletes move on to the next club if they get deferred. Right. And if they're requesting additional information, the process must be concluded in 48 hours. Again, we don't want this to be drawn out. We understand that we are limiting athletes to two clubs and we want to make sure that they're not sitting around waiting. So we kind of put timestamps on these different processes to keep it moving along and to keep everybody, you know, finding their home quickly and efficiently. If you do not respond to your offer within 24 hours and the club doesn't extend it, then you would be automatically just deferring that offer. So that's that. So you're not allowed to apply to different clubs until the status of both your applications have been finalized. Once that's been finalized, then you can move on to the next club if needed. So this application process is not over. So as tryouts happen throughout the year, teams get added. Clubs also have the opportunity to use the application process throughout the year if they're not, you know, comfortable introducing new athletes into their roster, training cohorts, things along that line. They are able to use this process, not just during the tryout period. They can do it to fill the roster anytime during the season. Again, if you sign back your, your offer is accepted, you're, you like it, you say, yes, I'm coming to your club, you're officially committed to the team. So if you choose to resend an offer, you do have to go through our athlete transfer policy and follow the release request portion of that policy. There is a link to that on our website under About and Policies and I believe it might also be on that. The tryout information page under the Club section as well. Clubs are permitted to collect deposits once they've accepted an offer. Be mindful to look at that as well. And whether it's refundable, non-refundable. And once everything is buttoned up and you guys are, everything is signed and ready to go, you can begin training. And again, training has to follow all the OVA Return to Play protocols. So that's some of the big stuff when it comes to training and, or sorry, the application process and finding your home for the, for the new season. And I'd also kind of just like to point out a couple of things when you are searching for your club and, and looking for a club. Make sure, just to avoid the whole asking for a release after, don't be afraid to ask questions. I always say to everybody I talk to, be as transparent as possible throughout this whole period. I know it's a tough period. It's stressful. And the addition of COVID really kind of puts a kink in a lot of the plans. But the more open and transparent both parties are in this process, the easier it is for everybody. And as parents and athletes, athletes shouldn't get a, you know, a free pass and let mom and dad do all the work. It's important for them to really look at what the club stands for, what they want out of a club. Parents' guardians should also be looking for the club's policies, making sure that they are in line with what their philosophies are as a parent and what they want to get out of the experience. There are clubs that, you know, really focus on different development or I don't want to say high performance, but really winning and making sure they're in that top tier. And that necessarily means equal play time. So again, really make sure you, you look at your club's policies, make sure you look at their, what governs their, their club, their mission, vision, values, and make sure it's what you're comfortable with. So that's my little tag on the end.
Thanks, Kerry. We got a couple of questions here, just to clarify. What is being posted on the website? Is it a summary of the number of athletes that are signed and needed? Or is it actually the name of individual athletes?
Right. So there'll be two different areas to look for on the website for that. We are going to have a club declaration where that's, the club's going to say, this is the spikers, our, our, you know, our 15 new team is looking for, to fill two spots and they can be general positions. There's nothing specific required. We could see that the bumpers are looking for two 18 new girls and they need a right side and a libero. So that's one list that was posted. And we actually will be posting all the names of our resigned athletes for this year. So we will have their club, club name, team name, their name, their position, and that'll all be posted on the website.
Thank you. And will the player application be linked to the NRS account?
Not at this time. It will be a downloadable form on the website. We will have Dylan, our, our website guru extraordinaire, get that posted front and center for everybody to find on September 8th.
However, it is on our wishlist, the developer. One day. I will make it happen.
Dreams will come true.
Perfect. And just quickly, the date on which the OVA will post the team information? That is what's on the screen right now?
Yeah, I think it's the 17th the club declaration is due. So we're going to work really hard to get that up and going right away.
On a 17th. Okay. Thank you. And I guess this is when we bring in Alicia.
Sorry, LP, there was one more tryout window question that we missed. Might as well get it answered before I start talking, because I talk a lot. There was one query about if, if an athlete applies directly to the club, how is the max two clubs being monitored?
You know what? They are going to be asked to fill out the two clubs that they are applying for on their application form. And any just curiosities, anything that comes across my, my desk, I will be following up directly with all parties involved.
Okay, now that you asked your question to Kerry, Alicia, you can go ahead.
Let me unmute myself, sorry. All right, I will make this quick. We've already been on for an hour. So the OVA is launching a new membership registration system on Monday, September 14th to replace the current national registration. Originally, we were supposed to be live tomorrow, September 1st. However, software development never seems to go as planned and we've had to push the launch back to ensure the system's ready for our members and the standards that we require. So you should have received an email today from the OVA, OVA office regarding the postponement. On the screenshot, you can kind of see this is the new look and feel of the membership registration system. It's very similar to the NRS, however, obviously it's branded OVA versus VC branded and run. LP, you want to switch to the next slide?
Of course.
For me, thank you. Some important information, the data is not being carried over from NRS to the MRS system. All individuals will now need to create their new profile as of September 14th. We want to purge all the old dirty data and make sure we have everything collected that needs to be in there. A big difference for the athletes for the 2021 season is that clubs can no longer create profiles and register the athletes. The individual athletes must, must create their own account or their parent can. We're doing this to ensure that all online electronic waivers are signed off on and that the parent-athlete signs off on Rowan's Law compliance, which is law. It's mandated by the Ontario government and clubs cannot sign off on that for the athlete and parent. The parent and athlete need to sign off on those to make sure we're all in compliance with Rowan's Law. Since we have postponed the launch of the new system to September 14th, just a friendly note here, and your club would also bring this up with you from the beach to indoor season. If your child hasn't participated in any OVA or club program over the summer, they will need to sign off on the updated COVID-19 OVA waiver. It can be found on our website under the COVID-19 to Return to Play Plage Resources. Just fill it out, sign off, and you can head it into your club. They'll follow up with you on that as well because it's part of the Return to Play protocol. And once the system is switched live on September 14th, the COVID waiver will be collected electronically for you there. Another new process that we have introduced for 2021 is that athletes will need to register as tryout players before attending any encore tryout. Once again, this is to ensure compliance with Rowan's Law and how to make sure all the waivers are signed off on. So then we have a few other steps once athletes are selected for the team and they, or if they've been resigned from their club in the 2019, 2020, or 2020 season. We're asking that athletes only register as recreational players for now. You know, we keep talking about the COVID landscape and how we have to be very fluid and adaptable because things could change. We may spike again, God forbid, or, you know, we might be able to move forward and get competitions going sooner rather than later. However, in case there is a delay, we want to make sure that we're not charging the full membership competitive rate until we know that competition is, when it's happening. So the recreational membership is the $7 plus HST for the OVA and there's a $5 volleyball Canada fee on top of that. So you'll be looking around $12 to ensure that the insurance coverage is there for the new season. And like I mentioned, what the competition calendar is concrete and events are up and running. At that point, that's when the athletes will need to update their membership role to a competitive player. This is where you would need to have discussions with your club. Some clubs, you know, collect your club fees and that includes the OVA membership in there. So they might just upgrade the membership for your athletes when they're adding into the teams in the new MRS system. Or they might just ask you to upgrade that. So once again, just clarify with your club on that. So that's basically the gist of the MRS system with what the athletes need to do. I won't really get into club staff and coach registration. There's a lot of upgrades in the system for clubs where they'll be doing less paperwork and everything will be collected electronically. So hopefully that makes their lives a bit easier this year. So I see a question about clubs centrally registering and pay for all athletes. No. So basically, well, yes, okay. So once you are in the system as a tryout player, which is a free membership, you don't have to pay anything. Or once you upgrade to, sorry, the clubs at that point can add you to their team as a recreational player and they can pay that $12. So once again, have that conversation with your clubs on the process that they want to take with the athletes and they can, you make sure you're on board with that as well.
Alicia, thank you very much, but you, I just noticed that you kind of skimmed over, you know, Rowan's Law, talking about it like everybody is, you know, aware of what that is, like we are. Could you just maybe explain what that is for the people who maybe don't know?
Yeah, Rowan's Law was brought into effect by the Ontario government based on a rugby athlete that passed away of concussion injuries a few years back. So with Rowan's Law compliance, there are documents that all of our members have to review prior to registering and participating in any event through the club or OVA. All of these documents are found on the website. It's linked through the MRS system. So prior to clicking all the little boxes in the waivers, you know, you can click on those links and review those documents and we have to do this annually. So that's part of the Rowan's Law compliance that we all have to adhere to.
Right. And that is law, so that's, that's like
Correct. We have to do it. Yeah.
Now, what about, what about respect in sport? Is that going to be in MRS as well?
Yep, so MRS is Exactly. So all the MRS codes, just enter your certificate number and that lives in your athlete or child's profile for the duration that they're a member of the OVA.
So, so just to understand, people will have to, they had entered it in the NRS system, but since it doesn't transfer over, they will have to fetch that number.
Do it one more time. Yeah, unfortunately, yes. Yep.
Okay.
Yes, and I see there's a question. You can still log into NRS and get your information from there.
Okay.
I'm sorry, just another question, sorry, another question from Ann Phillips. The memberships are being carried forward from the 2019, 20 to the 2020, 21 season up until September 14th. So all of the waivers for all of the active athletes that have been in place from last season to this season are still valid. So the only thing that would need to be signed off on, once again, is if your athlete hasn't participated in any summer programming. So all of the MRS collected photo releases and waivers and so forth are being carried forward to September 14th. And then that time when you register an MRS, that's when the new season information will be put into effect.
Fantastic. Thank you, Alicia.
Welcome.
And thank you, everybody. I will just conclude this presentation by essentially, you know, talk about why we should sign up for volleyball this year. And I think if you're on this call, you probably want your child to be returning to volleyball and want to know how that's going to happen. And you may know some people who, and you may yourself, you know, be very positive and say, yes, I want my child to return to volleyball. Or you may be hesitant a little bit, or you may know people who are hesitant a little bit to send their kids back to, to activities. The, the one thing I just want to say is that we definitely want to see athletes, you know, join their clubs and, and stay engaged with volleyball. I mean, we saw and we heard from a lot of players that were very disappointed after all the season was canceled last spring. And, and that was one of the reasons why we decided to adapt this past summer, our Team Ontario program to deliver it online. And we were actually able to reach over 550 athletes between beach and indoor this summer in July for over five weeks. And it gave athletes a chance to connect to volleyball, connect with each other. And it was really, really good for, for them from a social inclusion standpoint, from also a mental and emotional wellbeing standpoint, to be able to connect with their friends and with the sport that they love and be engaged in something and, and be driven and have objectives that they're trying to achieve and all that stuff in, in something that they're passionate about, which is volleyball, right? That was very, very good for the, for the athletes. So similar here, as we start this, this new year, there may be a lot of stresses. Maybe your, your child won't be able to connect with the friends that she or he has in, in volleyball. If athletes are not able to get back on court because of lack of permits and stuff like that, we will be providing clubs with resources to help them provide virtual training to, to the athletes. So that is our hope, that even if there is nothing on court this, this fall, we are still as a community able to connect and talk about volleyball and learn things about volleyball and progress along, you know, the volleyball pathway. And, and yeah, so we're working really hard to make that happen so that your child gets, gets a positive experience and actually feels like there's some sort, some sort of normalcy, you know, around, around, around their lives these days. Because we know that volleyball is a big part of, of our youth athletes' lives. So, yeah, in the fall, we will also be working on creating some exhibition matches opportunity. So we have announced that we will not restart the official season until at least January, but we are working on some potential exhibition matches in the fall if we have permits and if things go well. So we will keep you informed on that. But that would be another reason to, to sign up for volleyball this fall so that if there is a chance that we get back to competition, even if it's exhibition, your child can be part of that. And I guess lastly, I would say that, like from my personal perspective, when I look at volleyball and where we are and what has happened to other sports and their organizations, I feel like we're pretty lucky, a knock on wood so far. I feel like our volleyball community is, is holding strong. And, but I do think that we need to stay connected in order to maintain this. We don't know what this coming year is going to throw our way. We don't know if we're going to actually be able to come back to competition or not. But either way, I think we need to But either way, I think we need to stick together and so that, you know, we can, eventually we'll come out of this. But we need to stick together through that process so that we come out, you know, on the, on the air to end and we're, and we're strong. And, and then we can, you know, keep flourishing as an organization that we've done in the past so many years. So yeah, so let's stick together and yeah, and let's do the best that we can to make something out of, out of the opportunities that we have, right? So at this point, I know I've seen a bunch of questions on competitions and I think that parents are very eager to, to hear kind of what the plan is for that. So I'd like to ask you a couple of questions there, Carrie and Alicia perhaps. So yeah, a lot of questions. So why don't, to tell us a little bit about what's in the plans right now? Like, how does it look for competition? What is you and your team working on? And how likely is it you think that, that we're back in, in some exhibition games this fall?
We are working really hard as a team to try and secure some gym time and to work within the government regulations and offer some type of competition, very similar to what has been offered on the beach. So the friendly type model where you come in in the morning, you play some games and then some new teams come in in the afternoon and we play some more games. Again, we are really restricted on those government regulations, gathering size and public health safety recommendations. So we really need to be creative and working with that. But our very first obstacle is finding those facilities. Kaitlin and Mark are amazing at what they do and they are really trying hard to, to work with the community centers and the private facilities that are taking bookings and, and get what we can. And that may look like an evening activity for local teams. It may look like, like a friendly, a beach weekend. You know, we're really trying to think outside the box and, and really make sure we're providing some type of opportunity for the fall. We're hoping for November and maybe the first couple of weeks in December is where we're, we're really hoping to get our permits.
I would say to add to that as well, in terms of the staff that are looking into resources and facilities, Carrie and her team are also working with the Indoor Volleyball Development Committee and the Regional President's Council as well. Just to kind of go over different formats and playing opportunities and, you know, from a club perspective and putting their club hats on, what would work well for them and how, you know, would keep everyone happy, but, you know, get some excitement back. You know, it's been a very hard six months of COVID and not playing the sport that we love. So I think even just getting back into the gym is going to be an amazing opportunity for all of the athletes and coaches and club and our staff. So, you know, making sure that we work with these committees as well to have a, you know, program in place that's going to be the best with what we can do to make sure that we're being responsible and sticking to all the health guidelines and protocols and Return to Play, but also offering some competition for our athletes as well.
Great stuff. Thank you. And just a rapid fire question here. How, in this context, how will scorekeeping and lines be done? Any thoughts around that?
Yeah, so we touched on that subject before about limiting spectators. We have been looking at other models that have been running volleyball competition and limiting team staff that come into facilities that would help assist with that. And these events will be friendlies. So we are hoping to, although still offer professional refereeing, maybe look at having some type of team sharing when it comes to the lining and scoring. But we're, or again, we're looking at everything and just making sure that, 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 that number 50 is kind of tricky with volleyball considering rosters are often up to 10, 12 players in, in that. So we'll have to play with that, but there, there's options. And, you know, we do want to have a level of professionalism with the officials and, you know, really make sure that these opportunities are worthy, not worthy, worthwhile. But we'll be creative.
Okay. Another question here. How is a two-player, three-player block not considered deliberate physical contact? Maybe I can answer this question.
Yes, perhaps.
So the, it's a great question and it is a question that we've asked ourselves when we were designing the protocol for the Stage 3 in Ontario. And the truth is, you know, if executed well, technically there should not be any contact between players. Now, we know that players sometimes accidentally will, you know, touch each other when they go and block. That is true as, I guess it's more true as players get older and older and they start moving really fast to the outside and they start blocking and kind of floating and dumping into each other. Obviously, we created this protocol with our best knowledge and thinking about what was responsible to do. It doesn't mean that it won't change. It doesn't mean that as we get started and we see that there are a lot of contacts between players and we feel that it is not respecting, I guess, the, the nature of, of, of our, our protocols and it is not safe enough, we may change that. But we thought that it was something that we could do based on what other provinces and other places in Canada were also doing. So, so yeah, I mean, it is true, it, it could accidentally happen. Again, we considered it was not deliberate in this, in this context, but again, there could be some changes. You have to remember that everything that's happening right now is very fluid. So we say something today, but let's talk again tomorrow and maybe it's changed. And so that, that is why, by the way, yesterday on the call with the clubs, they were very adamant about the fact that communication is key this year and you can't over-communicate. So clubs have been talking to each other, saying, "Communicate as much as you can with your, your members." We wanted to do the same, so as things change and evolve, we'll, we'll let you, we'll let you know. So while I was answering this question, I did not search for the next one, but I know we have a bunch, so let me just find the next one.
I think Alicia already quickly answered them for you.
No, there's a few we've missed. There's one about live streaming. So yes, we are looking into live streaming options for all the competitions specifically. It's hard because right now we don't know what facilities we have, but facilities where spectators may not be allowed. We're trying to work with our business development manager to see the best option, to see how we can possibly be in to look at 600 different type, friendly type events and then regular season tournaments once they start later in the year. But yes, we are looking into it and we're trying to figure out the best way to tackle this one.
And there was also a question about bursaries or grants available to support the clubs with the additional COVID safety costs. Anything that you are aware of?
Yep, I answered that one. So we sent information out to the clubs a week or two ago after one of the town hall sessions with regards to the Ontario Trillium Foundation Resiliency Fund and then also the Red Cross grants that were available. The Red Cross grant was due today, actually. And it's basically for clubs trying to change their programming to ensure they're meeting the, you know, health and safety standards of the Return to Play protocols. And the Ontario Trillium Fund, there's two intakes. So September 2nd is the first one and then the next intake is December 2nd. So clubs have some times to review that as well. And we also let clubs know that we're here. We're a founding board if they want to speak to any of our staff. Joanne, myself, Jen Harkness can answer, you know, questions on the grants and kind of the tools of the trade and what they should be putting in there, so.
There is also, Dylan posted off the website. So if we do come up with any, the grant opportunities will get posted. And there is some potentially from the Coach Association of Ontario, they could get a bit just for some coach training.
So I think that's it. I think we've gone around all of the, all of the questions. Thank you for, thank you, everybody. We, you know, there's some really nice comments here on the, in the chat about all the hard work that OVA staff is doing. We are working really hard. Actually, it's, you know, I feel like, you know, sometimes I, in my case, the commute has been replaced by more work. So I have more time to work now that I work from home. But, but we love doing it and we do it because we cannot wait. We cannot wait for the athletes and the coaches, the referees and youth appearance to be back on court. This is why we do it. Like, we all work really hard in the office just for those few moments that we get to spend with all of you in the gym toward, you know, the spring. It didn't happen for us this past year. So now we're like, all right, doubling up because we want that to happen for ourselves, for you. So yeah, we're doing everything we can and thank you for joining us tonight. This post, sorry, this recording will be posted on our, on our YouTube channel and on our website. And if you have any other questions, you know how, how to reach us. You just go on our website, find our email address and you can contact any of us. We'll be happy to answer your, your questions. And yeah, so have a great evening, everybody. And on behalf of all of my colleagues here, again, thank you for, for joining us tonight.
Thank you, everyone.